I'd like to call the October 25th meeting of the governing body to order. Madam Clerk, would you take role?
Mr. Leyborn. Dr. Rennie. Mr. Royble.
Here.
Mr. Seagrave.
Present.
Mr. White.
Present.
Dr. Aldridge.
Present.
Mayor Collins.
I'm here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Escobell.
Here also.
And Mr. Johnson.
Present.
All members are present, Mayor. We do have a forum.
Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going today, I'd just like to say thank you to the Laramie County School District, number one, for the loan of this beautiful room until our building is ready for us to go back into it. This is very nice of them, so thank you so much.
Next item is number four, consent agenda. All items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
All right. Is there any member of the governing body that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Dr. Aldridge.
Twenty B, please.
Concur.
Concur.
All right, twenty B has been removed from our agenda. Is there anyone else? All right, I entertain a motion.
Second.
The movement is seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the consent agenda is approved with item number twenty B being removed.
Next item is six A, public hearing for a restaurant liquor license application filed with the city clerk's office for Stemon Business LLC, doing business as Belafoco, 2115 Warren Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming.
All right, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak about this liquor license? Anyone in the audience? How about from the governing body?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Royble.
Chris, what is the, the current license that they hold?
It's a restaurant liquor license, but because the LLC business entity is changing, it can't be just a transfer. They are applying for a brand new restaurant liquor license.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the governing body? All right, hearing none. The purpose of the public hearing has been met, and we'll assign this item to the public, or choose me to the finance committee.
Next item is number seven. Ordinance third reading, amending section 2.76.020B, Members' Terms Vacancies of Chapter 2.76, Downtown Development Authority of Title II Administration and Personnel of the Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, postponed from October 11th, 2021.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this ordinance? All right, hearing none. Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of Public Service Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I would so move.
Second.
Seconded by President White. Comments from members of the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson.
I guess, since this is a postponement for just public awareness in regards to the approval of Public Service Committee, could somebody say if there was actually any additional information that was provided during that committee meeting?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
Not, not really, other than Attorney Boster addressed the memo that she presented all of us and the fact that by making this change in the ordinance, we are, we were slightly out of compliance with state statute, and this, this change in the ordinance brings us into compliance with state statute.
Ms. Boster, did you have any?
Thank you. Good evening. Stephanie Boster, City Attorney. Councilman Rennie is correct. This is a change in city ordinance to clarify who appoints the city council member to the Downtown Development Authority. State statute is not very clear on that issue.
And ma'am, with the, the part that we're missing was the, the appointment has to be approved by the governing body. That was the part that we had not been following in past history?
That's correct. It appears that past history was that we are doing essentially what the amended ordinance proposes to do, which is have council president approve.
Any other comments from members of the governing body? Mr. Seagrave?
Through you to the attorney. Thank you for your research. I appreciate that very much. As I've read the statute, and I believe as you discussed, the statute says that either the mayor or the governing body should make the appointment. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilman Seagrave. That is correct, yes.
Just, just a couple of questions. Is there language anywhere that uses the term council president?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilman Seagrave. No, there is not.
So, the authors of this state statute have no time, I would assume, considered the council president to make these types of appointments, since they're not included in the statute.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the statute, which is 159205 and 206, refers to the governing body. But no, it does not say council president.
So, I would, I would assume, and I should not do that, I agree, that the authors wanted the governing body to get together and make a recommendation and not appointed to a council president, since those terms are not used in the statute anywhere. Does that make sense?
Mr. Mayor, through you to Councilman Seagrave, that does make sense. I would, I mean, we're assuming, but I believe that the legislator, legislature wanted the governing body to make that decision.
Correct.
And here you could decide to have the council president make the appointment, or the mayor. It's up to you.
Okay, but the, the terms council president aren't even considered in the state statute.
That's, that's correct, yes.
Thank you very much.
Other comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
For Attorney Boster, that it also does say that the mayor will make that appointment. It just says the governing body makes the decision, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Councilman Rennie. That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I guess, since I was the main proponent of this, I just want to point out that when the, the DDA is one of 22 boards that the council president makes that appointment. When the DDA was reconstituted 30 years ago, the intent from then always was that the council president would make that appointment. It was never until the recent interpretation by our previous city attorney. And that was only due to the fact that, of the combination of the DDA and Visit Cheyenne. Prior to that, or that even same attorney never had any issues with the council president making the appointment. Our city, obviously, our attorney 30 years ago missed the fact that that should be approved by the governing body. That, I agree, we were remiss in doing. But it has functioned, at least with the council representative, fairly well over those years. It's been a stable position usually when that person gets in there. I, as a, one that served as president several times and has been on this body for several years, I only know of two instances where an individual has been removed from a board, and that was at the request of that board. So, I think we've shown a lot of stability with the council president doing it. And as I said, that was the intent 30 years ago. We've made, we've corrected the one omission that we've been living with for that time. And we've also clarified the ordinance to the satisfaction of our attorney. So, I would argue that let's continue with what we've done historically. It's worked pretty well. And actually, and that was the intent. And as I said, we have 22 boards that operate this way. And, and I'm not sure why this wouldn't necessarily should be singled out and relinquish what's council authority to the administration.
Ms. Leyborn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, this is a pretty unique appointment. And I have a question for the city attorney. My reading of the city code that was in place for, I don't know how many of these 30 years, but I believe most of those 30 years. Could you cite that for us?
Ms. Boster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Councilman Leyborn. Well, we're currently looking at the, the ordinance 2.76.020. So, I, I believe that's a city code that you're referencing.
And what does it say?
Well, the part that we're amending, sorry, Mr. Mayor, through you to Councilman Leyborn. Section B of that ordinance leaves it pretty open currently, where it doesn't specify who is making that appointment, council president or the mayor.
Ms. Leyborn.
Well, this is a interesting matter. That basically came about as part of the reorganization of the Downtown Development Authority, which I think we proved by our combining it with Visit Cheyenne and really taking a look at how that agency operates showed why we needed to make these changes. And certainly, this change is one that I certainly believe in wholeheartedly. I think we're going to need to take a look at these various boards and commissions in the appointment process, because there are other issues besides this particular one. But in regard to this particular one, we weren't following the city code for 30 years, or however many that was. So, that argument, I think, is not particularly persuasive to me. And I also think that it's important that we take a look at not just what has been the practice with other boards and commissions, but with what actually that individual who's going to be doing that service should be accomplishing and should be involved with over a period of time, just as the other board members are appointed to a term of service. So, I don't think that that's significantly different. And I think that this is an unnecessary and potentially divisive effort here. I can look to a situation where the council president makes an appointment. There is controversy amongst the council members about the approval of that appointment, which definitely would not contribute to harmonious council, but it's hard to see what might not happen down the road. But obviously, as has been pointed out here, this was not contemplated in state law. It was not in city code, and so I speak in opposition to the third reading of this ordinance. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the governing body who'd like to speak to this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
One brief question for the attorney, please. Through you. Ms. Boster, is, is there any resolution or ordinance granting the city council president the authority to appoint anybody to anything that you're aware of?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilman Seagrave. I believe there are three boards that allow appointments in city ordinance by the council president. I can't recall offhand what those three boards are. But three of the 22.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, through you. I guess with that, knowing that, Stephanie, that there in city ordinance are only three boards that allow a presidential appointment by the council president. And that, my understanding and my experience has been that that is not necessarily what we've been practicing. I think that President White was able to appoint more than three people to, or three board representatives. I would just like to say that regardless of what happens on this ordinance tonight, I would hope that we would be able to look at all of our boards and advisory councils, commissions, whatever we have, and see if we can bring some consistency and uniformity to what we're doing and make sure that we're practicing what we have in city ordinance, and if not, that we change that. So, thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Okay, God, I hate that this is third reading on this thing, just reading this over again, because I'm doing it with a new pair of eyes. Stephanie, can you pull up 276020? The way I read A, "If there is of the authority shall be under the direct supervision and control of a board consisting of 10 members appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the governing body. Majority of the members except any member from the governing body shall reside, be a leasee or prop, own property within the downtown." So, it says 10 members appointed by the mayor in A. But then B, which is the one that we're changing, says the board shall constitute as follows. At least one member shall be a member of the governing body, appointed to serve at the pleasure of the governing body. Two, nine members shall be appointed in accordance with the bylaw of the Downtown Development Authority. So, 10 members are appointed by the mayor, but knowing in B, the way it stands now, nine members. So, A, unless I'm wrong, conflicts with B. So, are 10 members appointed by the mayor or nine under existing city code?
Mr. Mayor, to Councilman Johnson, I think that's a good question. I'm also looking at Wyoming Statute 159205, and I would agree with you. I think subsection A is a little bit confusing with regard to how many members are appointed by the governing body.
Man, I don't, I don't want to postpone this thing anymore, but that looks to be in direct conflict with A and B, because the way I would read it, if we were just on the section that we've been arguing over for the last few weeks, I would state that nine members would be appointed by the mayor, which would be basically all the members of the board. But the one member of the governing body serves at the pleasure of us, which therefore has typically, within like the mention with the 30 year history, has been appointed by the city council president, even though I understand either the mayor or the president are mentioned in state statute. But just the way that A and B read appear to be in direct conflict. So, were we actually in compliance this entire time if we were to strictly follow section B, that the nine members appointed by the mayor, which would be the people, the property owner leases as described? So, really, were we supposed to be making a change to section A instead of B?
Mr. Mayor, through you to Councilman Johnson, just in comparison, comparing the two 159205 with section 2.76.020A. It doesn't look like it's all that consistent. I think it's a little bit confusing, the two ordinances. So, I guess you have the option here that you can make an amendment to section B and then look again at A, or you can move forward with both.
Actually, I'm not, no, I will kind of defer to the sponsors of this to see what direction they want to head.
Dr. Aldridge.
I guess, in listening to that question and the reference to 2.76.020A, correct?
Yes.
Stephanie, it sounds to me like in A that the mayor appoints 10 members, and then in B, then it says that there are nine members of the DDA board, and then it says that the council confirms one, correct? So, it, the government, the mayor is still appointing all 10, but one has to be confirmed by the body, and the other nine do not require a confirmation by the governing body, if I'm, if I'm listening and hearing that correctly.
Mr. Mayor, through you to Councilman Aldridge. That's correct. Yes, I read it the same as well, and that's consistent with 159205 sub A, which has all of the appointments being made by the governing body. And then specifically subsection B, little one, calls out the appointment of the member that represents the governing body. So, it tends to treat that appointment differently than, than the rest of the appointments.
Only in the requirement of a confirmation, though, not in who's, who's making the appointment.
That's correct, yes.
So, and we, through you, Mayor Collins, to Stephanie Boster, and we do also have the option. I believe my colleague from Ward III stated that we had the option to pass this or to amend it, but we also have the option to kill it, is my understanding, and start over.
Mr. Mayor, through you. That's correct, yes, of course.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments from members of the governing body? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you take role?
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Leyborn.
No.
Dr. Rennie.
Yes.
Mr. Royble.
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave.
No.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldridge.
No.
Mayor Collins.
No.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
And Mr. Escobell.
No.
Five noes, Mayor.
All right, the ordinance fails on third reading. Next item, please.
Next item is number eight, ordinance third reading, amending the Unified Development Code, UDC, to clarify the interpretation of lots and amend accessory building regulations.
All right, is there anyone in the audience who want to speak to this UDC change? Hearing none. Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Service Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I would so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to amend by substitute dated October 18th, 2021.
Second.
And moved to amend, seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Could somebody just explain what the amendment is for the audience, please?
Mayor, member of city, members of city council, Connor White, planner, planner two in the planning development department. So, the amendment is, it just switched out a word. We had through lot in part of the accessory building code, which is something that we're removing completely from the UDC and changing it to do this double frontage lot. So, when it was, when I was writing this amendment, I accidentally left in through lot, and then noticed that after we had gone through the second reading, so it was just a fix to remove through lot completely and amend it, so that it matches the rest of the amendment with double frontage lot.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience want to speak? Hearing none. How about from the governing body on the amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the amendment is approved for back on the main motion. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you take role?
Mr. Escobell.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Leyborn.
Yes.
Dr. Rennie.
Yes.
Mr. Royble.
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldridge.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
And Mr. Cook.
Yes.
The ordinance is approved on third and final reading as amended.
Next item is number nine, ordinance third reading, amending the Unified Development Code, UDC, modifying the density standards of UDC 5.1.5D, multi-dwelling buildings, apartment lot types.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this UDC amendment? Hearing none. Dr. Rennie.
Mayor. The recommendation of the Public Service Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I would so move.
Second.
Seconded by President White. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, take role, please.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escobell.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Leyborn.
Yes.
Dr. Rennie.
Yes.
Mr. Royble.
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldridge.
Yes.
And Mayor Collins.
Yes. The ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Next item is number 10, ordinance on third reading, amending the Unified Development Code, UDC, to modify the MUR, MUB, and MUE zone districts, intent, context, and transitions.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this UDC amendment? Hearing none. Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of Public Service Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I would so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you take role?
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escobell.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Leyborn.
Yes.
Dr. Rennie.
Yes.
Mr. Royble.
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldridge.
Yes.
This ordinance is also approved on third and final reading.
Next item is number 11, ordinance on second reading, creating a new section 10.04.110, Amnesty Program of Chapter 10.04, General Provisions of Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this amnesty program? Hearing none. Ms. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Aldridge. Comments from members of the governing body? Yes, Mr. Johnson.
So, after going to Finance Committee last week, so after third reading, do we expect, is the resolution currently in works? If this does pass on third reading, that we're looking for introduction the week after third reading? Is that what we're looking for, a resolution?
Ms. Fakelmann.
Yes, Mayor and governing body, Alessandra Fakelmann from the City Attorney's Office. I'm working hard to understand the parking program, which is proving a bit more complicated than I had originally thought. And I want to put forth a resolution and also make sure that the, the parking ordinance that we changed a few years ago is up to date with how the program is being implemented currently. So, I'm going to put both of those resolutions, or possibly an ordinance change, on at the same time, and so that I hope to have a next cycle for you to review.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments, questions from governing body? If not, we're on second reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance is approved on second reading. Next item, please.
Number 12, ordinance second reading, annexing to the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, land located southwest of the intersection of Brinher World, Park Hill Road, and Panorama Drive.
All right, is there anyone in the audience to speak to this annexation? Hey, hearing none. Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Service Committee is to approve on second reading, and I would so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to amend by substitute. The substitute is dated October 19th, 2021.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. As I understand it, the, the reason for the change is the county had changed their zoning, and we just had to change our, our ordinance to match what the current county zoning is. Okay, anyone in the audience like to speak to the change in amendment? Hearing none. How about from the governing body? All right, hearing none. We're on the amendment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the amendment is approved, and we're on the main motion. Those opposed, the amendment is, uh, approved and we're on the main motion. Any other comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance is approved on second reading as amended.
Next item is number thirteen ordinance second reading amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from county A R agricultural residential to M R medium density residential for land located southwest of the intersection of Bray Hill Road, Park Hill Road and Panorama Drive.
All right, is there anyone in the audience want to speak to this zone change? Hearing none, Dr. Randy.
Mr. Mayor, public service committee met on this item also and they recommended approval on second reading and I would so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Randy.
There's also a substitute for this to bring our, um, designations into compliant or, um, could, into being consistent. So I would move to amend by substitute dated October nineteenth twenty twenty one.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. And again, for the audience, the only thing that's changed is I understand it is the county changed the zoning and let's just make sure that the zoning we put in our ordinance matches what the county's current zoning is. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to that zone amendment? How about from the governing body? Hearing none, we're on the amendment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the amendment is approved and we're back on the main motion. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance is approved on second reading as amended.
Next item is number fourteen ordinance on first reading amending the unified development code UDC to modify articles two point one and two point two regarding posted and published notice requirements for divisions of land and zoning applications.
We'll refer this to public services committee.
Next item is number fifteen ordinance on first reading amending section fifteen point zero eight point zero three one building permit fees exceptions for incentivization program of chapter fifteen point oh eight international building code adopted of title fifteen buildings and construction of the code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming to reinstate the city of Cheyenne core development incentivization program.
We'll refer this one to the finance committee.
Next item is number sixteen resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the Wyoming Water Development Commission for grant funding for the crystal bypass pipeline project in the amount of two million five hundred and forty six thousand dollars and authorizing the director of the Board of Public Utilities to execute the application and all related documents.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Frankie, do you want to speak?
Uh, yeah, um, this is a resolution to allow.
Would you identify yourself for the record?
I apologize, Frank Strong with the Cheyenne Board of Public Utilities. Um, this resolution and the next one that you will see is for the Board of Public Utilities to apply for funding for the crystal bypass. The purpose of the crystal bypass is to allow us to deliver stage two water directly to the Sherard Water Treatment Plant. The way we currently are set up, all water from the Middle Crow and Rob Roy must flow through the crystal reservoir to be able to deliver to Sherar and that's the majority of our water. This project will allow water be bypassed around so that we can do maintenance to the outlet structures and be prepared for any kind of contamination or event with the crystal reservoir.
Thank you, Mr. Strong. Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Hearing none, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to adopt and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Aldridge. Comments from members of the governing body? Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Um, on the next two, actually sixteen and seventeen on the agenda, the reason I was a known, uh, finance committee was, um, strictly on the fact that, um, due to the monetary amounts that were being requested by SLIB, that I ask a review be done of how the city projects that have been submitted by resolution to SLIB had historically been done in the last decade. Um, I have spoken with our grants manager. She's doing an investigation, so I want them to let, or let vote who know that this was, I no mean an insult to them. I would have stopped this on any resolution that was requesting money from SLIB. And so after speaking to the grants manager and after her investigation is complete, we're looking at starting a work session probably in twenty twenty two to describe on how we can, um, approach our, um, grants and loans through SLIB. And so I wanted to clarify my vote during finance.
Anyone else in the governing body like to speak?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
Through you, Mr. Strong, please. I'm very much in support of this. I like the concept you have. Do we need to do it with the other reservoirs in the system? Is that something we should look at over a period of time?
Mr. Strong.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, no, most of our reservoirs actually have capability for different flow paths. Crystal is just the critical path to get to Sherard. So South Crow and North Crow can, can make it to Sherard. Uh, we don't have to take all the water through granite. It's just crystal is the main, uh, weak point.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Aldridge.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to, uh, Mr. Sherman, also to Mr. Brooks that I see in the audience. I just want to say, um, I really appreciate the forward thinking of the BLPU in, um, planning in for the event of a situation where it might make that water contaminated or unusable. I think that being prepared now is a much better, um, avenue than trying to fix it after the fact. So thank you for being forward thinking and for keeping our water supplies.
Through you, Mayor, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, we're on item number sixteen. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the resolution is adopted.
Next item number seventeen resolution authorizing submission of an application to the Wyoming State Loan and Investment Board for a loan from the Wyoming Drinking Water State Revolving Fund for the Crystal Bypass Pipeline Project in the amount of one million two hundred and fifty four thousand dollars and authorizing the director of the Board of Utilities to execute the application and all related documents.
All right, anybody in the audience like to speak? Hearing none, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to adopt and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Aldridge. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this ordinance or this resolution is also adopted.
Next item is twenty eight human services agreement between the city of Cheyenne, United Way of Laramie County to provide services to various community programs two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty two, one percent sales tax.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Hearing none, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to approve in an amount of five hundred thousand dollars and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by President White.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Royble.
I move to amend by substitute dated October twenty first twenty twenty one.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Can someone tell the audience what this amendment is for?
Uh, yes, Mayor and
Thank you, Ms. Fakelmann.
To the rest of city council Alessandra Fakelmann, Fakelmann from the city attorney's office. I did not realize that, um, one of the receiving entities had changed their legal name in the exhibit and so we corrected that change and that is the only change, um, that is before you tonight on the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nemec.
Vicky Nemec, Public Works, we also changed it to a one year contract in the total amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was a misunderstanding by our Public Works Administrator that attended the meeting when she did the contract. She put a two year contract as it was in the past. And when United Way reviewed it, they didn't notice that change, that, that was a two year, so my apologies on that.
So the two changes are changing peak wellness to the Volunteers of America and to a one year contract for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to those amendments? How about from the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the amendment is approved and we're back on the main motion. Comments from members of the governing body?
Yes, sir, when you're ready.
I'm ready.
As a member of United Way presence.
Mr. Hottle, Colonel. Ask your question, Doc, uh, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, well, there's actually several as everybody was aware of what I had sent an email in regard to this. And so that was my actual first question is a courtesy to our guest. Um, you received my email with everything, so you've had a chance to actually vet this and then so we're all current on emails on our answering and you also received the email today from Public Works with the Excel spreadsheet in regards to United Way contribution. So everybody's on the same playing field, right?
Mr. Mayor, through you, to Mr. Johnson, yes.
Okay, very good. I just want to make sure that any question I ask you, you were completely aware of it, so it didn't look like I was broadsideing you because I tried to give you everything in advance. And so, um, basically when it came down to just, um, the way that since I wasn't on council in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty and the way that, um, and because the Human Advisory Council was actually, um, brought into, um, you know, our current, um, procedures, I kind of was in the dark in regards to what we were doing. And so, um, that's why I kind of asked these and I apologize to the public in advance, but yes, there are twenty of these. So, because I tried to get as many of them reduced as I could before this, but so I guess in regards to the way that the Human Advisory Council works in regards to what was actually presented to us, um, on this agenda item. Um, I guess because it was a copy and paste, um, contract from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one with really no changes in monetary amounts, uh, for those agencies. I, my first question was, were any other agencies contacted to take part in the renewal of the contract in twenty twenty one besides the ones listed on the October eleventh twenty twenty one council?
Mr. Strong.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, through you, uh, to Mr. Johnson, uh, the answer to that question is no. Uh, the contracts that are done are on a two year, uh, basis and, uh, the human services account, uh, advisory council was asked in twenty twenty, early twenty twenty to extend that to a three year contract. And the reason for that is as you collect data on these agencies and what they're providing to the community to get a good database on how they're doing and what they're providing back to the community and the success of that. You have to give them time to be able to do that. If you give them money for one year, uh, it's hard for them to budget. It's hard for them to, uh, collect the data for that one year. A two year cycle is better. A three year cycle helps them even more. And as we look to the community, we're moving towards more of a collaboration piece with it. And, um, a three year cycle delivers better results for that.
So I guess on subtext one, uh, this is a follow up on this one before I move it to you. Um, so that's really what you're, because we did a two year contract in twenty nineteen, it looked like that was from January twenty seventh of twenty nineteen if I remember correctly in regards to looking at the agendas. So I guess really what you were looking for on this one year contract that was missed, but was just done in the amendment. This is pretty much what you're asking for, for, to extend for the third year. If I'm following your logic correctly, is that what you would say?
And Mr. Mayor, through you, yes.
Okay, thank you so much for that one. Then, um, so basically number two, my question was, is there an application process for other agencies to be included in this contract?
Mr. Mayor, through you, are you asking for twenty twenty one?
Uh, basically I was looking, you know, because of the data that I had from the twenty twenty nine or excuse me, twenty nineteen contract to the current one that was put before us that, um, pretty much for if, say, we extend this for the next year and all of a sudden it becomes open next year. So is there an application process for, say, any new nonprofits that came into the community of Cheyenne that wanted to take advantage of the one percent um, that's offered here? Would they have an application process to be added to that list in twenty twenty two?
Mr. Mayor, through you, there will be a whole new, uh, app, application process that will go out to the entire community.
Thank you. Uh, number three, and then I guess, uh, what is the vetting process? Um, I'm not completely sure on what the bylaws were set up for the Human Advisory Committee. So what is the vetting process for new applicants to be included in the one percent funds?
Mr. Mayor, through you, what will transpire now is we go through and, um, we're in the process now of taking a look at a common agenda that will be used and it'll be taking a look at homelessness. It would be looking at, uh, education. It'll be looking at health. That will come back to the Human Services Advisory Council for governing body approval. Once that's done, an application will be formulated. Uh, that will then, uh, go out to the entire community asking for, um, proposals to be submitted. Those come back in electronically and then we have representation from the community that review those applications. Those applications, once they are reviewed, are, um, vetted and then selections are made. And out of those selections, then a, um, recommendations are made for funding and, uh, funding selections are vetted for, uh, dollars between United Way, the county and the city. And then those come back for the governing bodies to the Human Services Advisory Council and recommendations are made to the governing bodies for both the city and the county through the Human Services Advisory Council. And then recommendations are made back to the council for approval.
Okay, so number four on the list, um, just for what I ask you, but I'm basically not going to request an answer because you kind of answered it in regards to when the applicants must be received to be considered for the contract. So if you do that in twenty twenty two, and since you already had stated that you were going to put it out in all points bulletin for all nonprofits in the community to take acceptance of this. It's kind of irrelevant to ask them when the application date would be for twenty twenty two. Also, on number five as well, why was there no changes done to the applicants from twenty nineteen? You pretty much answered that, that this was a data collection to see what the actual entities had accomplished within the last two years and filing for a one year extension. Um, basically on number six, um, because we had, I talked to other council members that had been on in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Um, we really had no meeting minutes, um, for the discussions that were decided on the existing applicants of why they were chosen to remain the same. So I guess, um, I'm not, that's kind of, um, up in the air as far as council and who our representative is. Because after reading the resolution, it looked like there were supposed to be three members that were for representatives from city, three members from the county and three members from United Way. I don't know exactly what happened within this last year of who our council advisory and it seems like there's some confusion up here um, to, uh, who actually our representative was. From information I've received even this evening and you can clarify this, um, so I guess in twenty twenty, um, was there, did you guys actually, you mentioned at the beginning of twenty twenty pre pandemic, did, has there been any meetings or were they done virtually? How many meetings have you actually had within the last, I guess, almost two years now, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one?
Yeah, we, uh, Mr. Mayor, through you, we did meet early in, uh, twenty twenty and then, uh, there was, uh, no other meetings in, uh, latter, uh, part of twenty twenty. Uh, we did meet in April of, uh, twenty twenty one. And then there's another meeting coming up on the seventeenth of November in, um, of this year.
Okay, so I guess to answer, but do you know who, because was it supposed to be a council liaison or just a member of the city? Because the way that the resolution met just said three city, you know, pretty much three members of the city. So was that supposed to be the mayor, member of the governing body as well as, uh, official? I guess, how was that?
Mr. Mayor, through you, um, in the past, uh, I do know who those members are and I, I can get with you, uh, on the side and let you know who those members were supposed to be.
And so I guess, because kind of looking at just the way the contract was done in twenty nineteen and then in twenty twenty, um, I was just wondering, you know, how influential the Human Advisory Council was in making the choices that were selected in regards to our contract.
They were very influential.
Okay, so, no, that's simple enough. Okay, so, um, and then so that'll cross out number eight because I kind of incorporated in the number seven. And then you had already answered number nine, which was when the last time the, um, advisory council met. So I guess the thing is on number ten. And then I had clarified this with the city treasurer in regards to the ten thousand five hundred dollar payment that was per resolution to the advisory council that the, this kind of was a sticking point for me because I know that was, it was paid in twenty nineteen. I know it was paid in twenty twenty. And then from what I understand, it was paid recently for twenty twenty one. So I believe if my math's correct, that's about thirty one thousand dollars. It's been paid per resolution for this advisory council. And so I guess my main concern was with the pandemic and lack of meetings even virtually. I mean, what justified, you know, or going into question eleven, how was the ten thousand five hundred dollars spent when there was actually no, really no meetings in either of those years?
Mr. Mayor, through you, that money is also used to, uh, do the work and, uh, collect the reports and the end of year reports. Uh, do the, um, data analysis that is provided back to the HSC and the deliverables back to the county under the governing bodies. Uh, the end of year report for twenty twenty was delivered to the city and also to the county at the April meeting in twenty twenty one. So, uh, the work is still done. And the deliverables were made for the end-of-year reports for 2019 and 2020. So the work is being done.
I guess this is going to be a subtext on how it was spent. I guess, how was that, since I wasn't on council in 2019 when the Human Advisory Council was created? How was that number determined with, because it looked like that was for administrative costs? And so I guess, just looking at the entire history from not only the Human Advisory Council for the way that this was administered even in the past and when United Way took these things on, and from what I'm guessing, it's around 2013 to 2014 is when the City Treasurer's Office delegated, uh, the United Way to actually, um, designate how these expenditures are met. Um, let's see, how can I phrase this? Um, I guess, you know, with the enhancement of software and things, it was kind of brought, you know, up to me that, you know, what were these, was this Human Advisory Council, has it outlived its, even though it's two years, has it outlived its usefulness? And is this, you know, would it be appropriate to actually bring this under the city's guidelines again and administrations of funds? Um, due to just the upgrading of technologies and things that we could do this in-house and then literally save, you know, at least $10,500 on the Human Advisory Council? So just, you know, looking fiscally at this, I guess, you know, would the United Way be completely opposed if we were to bring this back in-house to the governing or to the City Treasurer's Office?
Mr. Mayor through you, I, I'm not in a position to answer that question.
That's fair. Okay, so.
Actually, Mr. Johnson, I think Ms. Nemec wants to take a quick.
Vicki Nemec, Public Works, Mr. Through you, Mayor, and Mr. Johnson. The, uh, the reason that the, the only thing that we used to do was Public Works did requisitions. And the City Treasurer's Office, we did purchase orders, we paid the bills directly to the entities that were identified by the Human Services Advisory Council to receive those payments. We found out about, I think it was just this, uh, four-year period that the county just made their payment directly to United Way, and then United Way made, cut all the checks, which was just an additional piece. They never got any money, any extra money for it. The Human Services Advisory Council has existed for at least, uh, at least 12 years that I'm aware of. It, it wasn't, it, it, we do a new contract every four years. So the $10,500 has existed in past 1% resolutions as far back as I've been, um, involved with the 1% sales tax. The $10,500 is for United Way to administer that money to select those people that, those agencies to go through the pro, the process. It, it, it's a very involved process, involves a lot of time and energy on United Way's part. And then the Human Services Advisory Council just reviews those items and make sure that we are in agreement with how they, uh, have decided to administer those funds through the community and United Way service.
Okay, so I guess as a follow-up, so historically from, because what I could find is in 2019 is when the historic, or excuse me, the Human Advisory Council was created, that, so are you saying that we were paying the $10,000 or $10,500 prior to 2019, even without the his, the Human Advisory Council, or did this $10,500 only come into being when that agency was created?
Mayor through you, the Human Services Advisory Council has existed for at least three, four-year taxes. It, it, we do a new contract each four-year period, but the Human Services Advisory Council has existed for many, for over a decade at least, and probably further than that.
Okay, so just for historic purposes, why did we do a resolution then to create one if one already existed?
It's cre, Mayor through you.
Yes, ma'am.
It's created each four-year period when the tax is approved.
So the resolution was a renewal? So everything prior to this is, so if I was to go back to agendas for every four-year cycle from 2019 back, really the language did not change per the direction of the three members of the county, the city, and United Way. All of that language stayed the same. The contract that was done with the Human Advisory Council resolution was just a renewal?
Through you, Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Actually, that was one piece of the puzzle that I actually didn't know historically, and nobody seemed to be able to answer that question as far as this went back. And so, and it's kind of difficult to read our city's website on agendas. Okay, so let's see. And then I guess, um, because kind of go into the spreadsheet that we received today in regards to a funding mechanism for the agencies that were listed on our contract. And then looking at the United Way column, I'm guessing the alternative options, and like you said, with the consolidation purposes, where, um, since you probably don't have the, obviously you don't have a phone or anything in front of you, but I'm going to go from your memory. Looking at the spreadsheet today on the far-right column, the left-hand column said city, the middle column said county, and the right-hand column said United Way. For all the agencies that were not included, United Way was the one that actually had, you know, funding mechanisms. So I'm guessing that for agencies that you created consolidations with, you know, did like, from what I understood for Kamea, Family Promise and them, they were, uh, asked to consolidate under the kind of a homeless program where United Way was going to, uh, work with them on a grant proposal. And so that funding came from United Way contributions. Is that where that funding came from? It wasn't, the only people that were getting the 1% were the agencies that were identified in the contract, and everybody else was being funded through the collaborations through United Way. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor through you, that's correct. And the Kamea, Family Promise, and USI, uh, came in this year as a collaboration, and we funded them through the United Way.
Yeah, and I guess just on the process, um, you know, historically, not only the historic, or excuse me, the, um, I'm a different board, sorry, the Human Advisory Committee, when it came through for many years now, I guess, how is the denial, uh, messages received? So say a agency is actually not selected for their 1% funds, how do you actually remit, uh, you know, relay the denial message to them? And are there any options for them to seek additional funding? Like, would you actually kind of work with them on, not only collaborations, but if there's funding mechanisms through other ways of getting them funding if they're denied? Do you, how do you work with them on those types of things?
Mr. Mayor through you. Any agency that, uh, does not receive funding, uh, we send them a letter. We also, uh, invite them in to United Way. And we have the team that reviewed their proposal meet with them. And we go over their proposal. Unlike other grants, uh, we cover why they were not funded. Uh, we suggest to them how they can improve their grant. Uh, we also look for other avenues where they could, uh, find funding. And then we work with them to see if there's additional funding out there that they might be able to utilize. So, uh, unlike a lot of grants that tell you, you did not receive your grant so long, we try to work with them. And we also, uh, try to explain to them why they did not receive their funding.
And then the next question, sorry about the numerics, because we've kind of, you've covered more as we went on. So one of the concerns that came up after the Finance Committee was, um, basically with the 1% um, monies that are delegated to these agencies, does the United Way collect any administrative charges before disseminating the funds to the agencies that are under the contract? Or do they get a 100% of what they're allocated?
Mr. Mayor through you, of the 250,000 that you allocate tonight, that is a direct pass-through. There is no funds, uh, kept out of that. 100% of that goes to the agencies.
Okay, and I guess, kind of looking now historically with the, um, with the Human Advisory Council, knowing that it existed for quite a while and everything, I guess, one of the things that made me nervous, right, when I first saw it, was that it was just a copy and paste agreement from 2019. And so I guess with the Human Advisory Council and all this auditing and everything for our $10,500 that we're doing, that how something like the name of Peak Wellness that we actually amended tonight could be missed after such a thorough vetting process?
Mr. Mayor through you. BOA did not notify us of the name change. A lot of times, uh, the agencies, until they notify us of the name change, we don't change it until we get proper notification. And BOA didn't come into us until probably just recently. And I can't tell you the date that we received official notification of the name change. And, uh, once we receive official notification, then we take the actions to correct, make those corrections. But BOA was late in getting that done.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess strictly knowing of what our, um, treasurer and their department has to go through, um, who conducts the audits with the United Way on regards to the 1% distribution?
Mr. Mayor through you, uh, we use an outside agency, and I can't tell you, I can get back to you, uh, with the name of the outside agency. But United Way does an annual audit every year, and it's an independent audit.
And then I'm guessing from the, that they have not had any issues with conclusions on anything that you have had a, pretty much a clean audit for, I would say, the last decade or more.
Mr. Mayor through you, yes, we have.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much for taking your time, and I really appreciate you actually looking over my questions and, and getting me answers and everything, you know, I know this took a lot of time, you know, out of your schedule, and I didn't mean to, you know, look like I came across as accusatory because when somebody writes 20 questions to me, it automatically looks like I'm accusing them of malpractice and things, and that wasn't in my intent. Fortunately, I was only going to write five, and then that led to more and more. So, but I tried to get this to you as quickly as I could so you could be prepared. So thank you so much for your time tonight.
Mr. Mayor through you, you're welcome.
Colonel, thank you for being here. Appreciate you. Anybody else? Dr. Aldridge?
Yeah, I just wanted to make note that in visiting with Mr. Hoddle prior to the meeting starting, he did, uh, indicate that there is a report that was given to the city, uh, I believe in April after the April meeting. And so if we could get a copy of that, um, for the council, I believe it went to the mayor initially. If we could get a copy of that for the council members, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor through you. I believe, um, Monet Flores has already sent that out to the council, that end-of-year report I believe you were referring to. So I believe that's been sent. Okay, and that could be sent out again.
All right, is there anyone else in the governing body that would like to speak to our United Way Human Services Agreement? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, recommend, or the agreement is approved as amended?
Next, excuse me, next item is 20B, Agreement Between the City of Cheyenne and the Wyoming Department of Transportation, YDOT, for Wyoming Rural Public Page, Public Transportation Grant to assist in providing a local match for operating funds for the transit program for fiscal year 2022.
All right, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to this agreement with YDOT? Hearing none, Mr. Roybal?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation the Finance Committee is to approve in an amount of $282,885. However, it's come to the committee's attention that matching funds are not required. Therefore, the amount of the grant award is 160,000, and I so moved second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Roybal, second by Dr. Aldridge.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Roybal.
Uh, can we have, is ready on, online with us, or? First, could someone please provide? Okay. And I, I guess my question is, uh, to you, Mr. Mayor. At 282,885, she provided us a letter that said we did not have to do any local match. So does that mean we get the whole 285, or do we have to, we just get 160?
Vicki Nemec, Public Works through you, Mayor, Mr. Roybal, we get the 160. The, the rest is us, is of city match. The, the entire thing comes down to, we haven't had to match this grant money in, well, since at least 2009. We've asked at that time, when, uh, we asked at that time, we asked YDOT to change the contract, and they says that they preferred not to at that, uh, because it was a standard contract that all of the entities throughout the, the state use. And only Cheyenne and Casper are different. We don't have to provide matching funds. So they chose to leave the wording and just gave us an email. Now, since then, we have received a letter dated October 22nd that stipulates that we are not required to map, provide the city match.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Nemec? But any other comments from the governing body? Thanks, Vicki. All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the agreement is approved.
Next item is 23A. Voucher Report.
All right, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to the vouchers? About from the governing body. All right, next item, please.
23B Revenue Report.
All right, same thing. Anyone want to speak to the revenue report? Up in the governing body. All right, next item.
23C Amounts for Public Turn to be held November 8th, 2021, at 6:00 PM at Story Gym, Laramie County School District Number One Boardroom, 2811 House Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, in via electronic conference meeting to determine whether compliance of annexation conditions required by Wyoming statute 15-1-402 exists for land located north of the intersection of Old Happy Jack Road and Westland Road, other business.
All right, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to other business? Hearing none, how about from the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Johnson.
I guess after, um, kind of, for my United Way tirade, um, in looking through so much of the agenda, I guess, with the amount of UDC modifications and amendments that are going forward, do we know how frequently we, I know that, I think per state statute, that the law doesn't come into effect until the following Saturday, when it's printed for public notice in the Renown Newspaper of Note, I believe is some of, one of the language. But as far as our internal, how frequently do we, once we make all these modifications, how frequently is the website updated in regards to code change either through the UDC or through the, um, the ordinance changes that we do? I guess just so I'm working on the most current information, I know when it's updated.
Mr. Blue.
Mayor through you to members of the council and Councilor Johnson. We try to update that almost immediately after approval and publication. So Connor is the, the master at updating our Unified Development Code, so the one on the website is generally up to date. Um, the Saturday or the week after the amendment, which is after the clerk's office publishes that ordinance in the paper.
Thank you, Charles. Okay, I guess not follow-up to Charles because he answered the UDC question. Do we know who does the update for the city code part?
Mr. Mayor, Chris Jones, City Clerk. Um, the City Clerk Office does that, and that is a little bit of a delayed process as we have to send it out to a company that modifies our, um, code book, which is then put online and any of the hard copies that we have, and there, there is a delay process to that because we have to send it out for that.
And that's through, is that through MuniCode?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other followers, Mr. Johnson?
No, I'm sorry, I should have said that was all. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. White.
Um, just two items. Um, the first item, uh, we passed item 20C tonight via consent agenda. And that was the collector labor, uh, collective labor agreement with the local fire union. And just wanted to speak, um, to that and give, uh, thanks to you. Um, Miss Fakelman and the Attorney's Office, former City Attorney O'Donnell, Chief Copper and the, uh, new union leadership. I know that there was, this was certainly a long, drawn-out process, but I'm certainly glad that we were able to come to, um, some sort of resolution. Uh, and, uh, we have a clean slate for negotiations when we begin again in three months. Um, but, uh, I, I just needed to applaud the efforts of, of everybody on that. And then the second thing, you, uh, thanked the school district for letting us, um, use their facility for an indeterminate amount of time. Also wanted to thank our staff. Our admin Jen, Mr. Skinner, Ms. Jones, everybody involved. Uh, they've spent a lot of time over here in the last week, making sure this room was going to meet our needs. Um, and, uh, just making sure things were, would run as smoothly as possible tonight. So, uh, all the staff that worked so hard the past several days on that should be commended as well. I just wanted to make that, put that in the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Aldridge.
Um, Mayor Collins through you. I just wanted to, um, give kudos to the Public Works Department. I know all of our employees work really hard in the city, but we had two situations in the last two weeks where the Public Works Department just did it, went above and beyond. We had a situation on Barbell Port where we had some land that.
We had a situation on Barbell Port where we had some land that we didn't know who it belonged to, and John Palmer did some research and found out that actually was city responsibility. And within, I think, forty-eight hours, Vicki had a crew out there that was mowing, uh, before the snow hit. Um, and a, a resident even came out and asked who's paying for this, because they were concerned about that. Um, but we also had a situation where we had somebody, uh, hit a stop sign at the corner of Eighteenth and Logan. Uh, someone posted on Facebook that was kind of like taunting us about, well, we wonder how long it'll take the city to get this taken care of. And in less than probably four hours of it being reported, Vicki had someone out there and it was repaired. So, um, just a shout out to Public Works, who's been extremely responsive and, um, all of our employees that work really hard every single day to make sure they address those issues in our community, so thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make a brief comment, uh, personal privilege, if I may. I know that this isn't, uh, official city business, but, uh, if I may, Mr. Mayor, may I proceed?
Let's try it.
Well, this is a pretty special meeting for me tonight in this room. Fifty-two years ago, I was, began my career in elective office in this room at the psychology class and was chosen to represent the students on the student senate, so, um, it's, uh, meaningful to me to come back tonight and reflect on, uh, those many years and many experiences. Thank you very much.
I think I remember being in these buildings, but on the other side, uh, from East High School and basketball games, so, uh, I do have some more memories of, of this facility too, sir, thank you. Anyone else like to speak, Mr. Johnson?
Kind of to follow up, um, what Michelle said when she triggered about the stop sign on Facebook, um, just, if any member of the public, before you actually make accusations that six, or that any kind of tax dollars are being used, uh, we all got kind of tagged in a post this, a few days ago, thinking that the, um, bird scooters were actually a city project that was funded by the city. And so three of us actually responded to the same text, telling them that, no, that was an independent endeavor. And so if you actually are, you know, before making these accusations of taxpayer dollars, if you could just kind of reach out to us beforehand to let us know before, three of us have to answer to a Facebook post just on things like something as simple as bird scooters. It, we just approved an ordinance change, you know, to allow them into the community, that this was an independent, you know, firm that came into our community. And so we all acknowledged that and then provided them, thank you, by the way, for ever, who updated the website, because I just copied and pasted, you know, the information from Bird Scooters for Customer Service and things, so I could give that to the residents, so they could, you know, take care of it themselves, so. Um, I've seen a lot more social media saying that we're responsible for taxpayer dollars when it's things that we're not even responsible for. I know this goes even into street repair on what we're actually responsible for compared to what the county's responsible for, to the state. So we have to actually educate our constituency that, you know, just because it's a, a road, it's not always our responsibility. So when you do tag us, please make sure that, you know, we, um, you know, you kind of have an idea of what you're stating first, or just send us an instant message instead of just tagging us for public execution.
Anybody else want to speak on their other business? Dr. Aldridge?
I, I just wanted to remind everyone that, uh, we do have our six penny sales tax election next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. And regardless of how people, um, vote, we love to see everyone go out and cast their ballot, if you haven't already. So, um, hopefully, everyone will have an opportunity to vote.
Anyone else? So I'm going to ask the, uh, uh, city council to go into executive session to talk about, uh, a, a potential for, uh, litigation. So if I could have a motion to that effect, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
President White.
Pursuant to Wyoming statute sections sixteen dash four dash four oh five, uh, dash subsection A dash triple I, I move that the governing body meet in exec, in executive session to consider a matter involving proposed litigation to which the governing body may be a party.
All right. Like, is your second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, so we're gonna move into executive session, uh, just so you know, there will be no other business of the governing body after this, uh, executive session. We'll just adjourn and go home, so thank you all for coming, again, thank you to, uh, Laramie County School District, for what in our staff for making this happen. And, uh, we will now move into executive session, which means everyone will have to leave, uh, other than the folks that our city attorney thinks needs to be here. And we will, uh, turn off all of our electronics, and, uh, uh, we will see you again at our next governing body meeting in two weeks, thank you.